First, I'd like to welcome everyone to this Town Hall session. Thank everyone for coming. This is a nice-sized turnout. Food and beverage is always a hot topic, so we knew we'd get a nice-sized group. I'd like to start off by talking a little bit about the Town Hall sessions we've already had this year, meaning this board term. This is the fourth in a series of four. We started in April of last year, and that Town Hall focused on the survey results that were just completed then. That was presented by Jim McArthur of Synergy Solutions. And then we had another Town Hall meeting in July, the end of July, and that one focused on the budget. That was a budget presentation that I made at that time along with Mr. Brown as Treasurer. Then in October, we had a dual-purpose Town Hall meeting, and that focused on the Strategic Planning Committee's work on the vision, mission, and value statements. And they presented that. Mr. Murphy, along with General Wishart, made that presentation. At the same time, we had the management team available to explain to the members what they could expect for this coming season. And again, that was in October. Today, the focus is on food and beverage, and the presentation is going to be by RSM. They're formerly known as McGladrey, just so they can confuse everybody. The Board of Directors here at Stonebridge actually attended a session at Gray Oaks last April, and that session included a presentation. It's all from McGladrey. It's on trends, and it has to do with all the different hot topics in country clubs, whether it be food and beverage, cyber liability. It's a great opportunity to see how we stack up and compare against other clubs. Part of that presentation is called "The Club F&amp;B Realities: A Circle of Truth," that Tammy presents, and she'll be presenting that today, so you all can see it. The difference today is that it'll incorporate some Stonebridge-specific slides, so that you can actually see how we compare and stack up against other bundle clubs in southwest Florida. I want to talk a little bit about food and beverage at Stonebridge. Tammy's presentation is a lot of general information about trends in southwest Florida, but I want to talk a little bit about Stonebridge and where we've come in food and beverage. We opened up the club 17 months ago, if you can believe it or not, almost a year and a half, with almost double the volume that we did prior to the renovation. Obviously, we had some struggles last season with a lot more volume than we had anticipated. We had some staffing shortages. We weren't staffed with enough management team in food and beverage to adequately cover the volume that we were doing and the amount of amenities that we were offering. In March of 2015, we did the member survey, and it was just 10 months ago. It's hard to believe it was only 10 months ago, but just 10 months ago, we received the results of that survey. And in my mind, there were no surprises there. We knew the challenges were going to be in food and beverage, administration, some in leadership, so the results that we saw in food and beverage were not a surprise. But at the same time, it was a great opportunity for me because it gave me the tools that I needed to do my job, to be able to have the data to back up the fact that we needed more management in food and beverage, the data to back up the fact that we had to make some adjustments in how we were operating. So a lot of that started to take place immediately after season. Again, that presentation was in April, and then we had the presentation from Jim McArthur, and then shortly thereafter, I hired a food and beverage consultant. And actually, I caught wind of this consultant at the trends session that the board went to last April. Part of that session, there was a panel discussion with some club managers from the Naples area who had just recently done major renovations, and they were all feeling the same types of growing pains that we were. One of those clubs mentioned that he hired an F&amp;B consultant after the first year of trials and tribulations, so I reached out to that manager, and that's how I got the name of Tim Rowe, who ended up being the food and beverage consultant we hired. I'm going to overly simplify the work that he did, because that work that he did was over the course of six, seven months. So to overly simplify it, before the team even knew who he was, I was working with him, so I had him do secret shops in all the food and beverage outlets multiple times. So he came in and saw and felt what you all were seeing and feeling in food and beverage. From there, he developed and worked with the management team we had in place to develop standard operating procedures. We had a service manual. It was a nice, big binder that probably no one ever looked at, but what he did is he stripped all that down and really took it down to the operational level for every position. So if you're a server, a bussler, a bartender, you knew exactly what your role was and how to do it. He then started to work with the food and beverage team. We asked, we actually invited the front-of-the-house food and beverage team to be a part of where we were going. And honestly, not everyone accepted that invitation. We actually had some staff members leave at that point, because we really had a higher expectation of where we were going. The next stage was extensive training. There was a lot of training that went into place over the summer, and a lot of members saw and felt the impact of that. I mentioned before about the lack of food and beverage supervision and management. The survey results gave me the ability, again, the tools, to be able to hire Ben Elwell as our clubhouse manager. And keep in mind, that was just five months ago. I know it feels longer than that for Ben, but it was just five months ago. And then we hired an F&amp;B service manager, Jake Lowell, in October. That was actually a direct result of the fact that a previous manager didn't accept that invitation that I mentioned earlier, but it was a great opportunity for us. We brought in Jake, and he's been a great addition to the team. Then in October, we promoted Sharon Bell to the bistro manager and Melissa Pinkham to the bistro supervisor. All of that occurred four months ago, so a lot of changes in the last few months. At the October Town Hall, October Town Hall meeting, I mentioned that I would put our management team against the best in southwest Florida, and I mean that. But then, two weeks later, the chef resigned, put us in a difficult position. It didn't feel like it at the time, but it was an excellent opportunity for us as well. That leads us to our new executive chef. I'm going to let Ben introduce him. The one thing I want to leave you with is Chef David's been with us for a little bit less than a month now. He's made a great impact, and the reason why I keep emphasizing the number of months is because the team members have been here is because we've come a long way in our food and beverage operations. But the team that we now have in place, we can go a lot further. I'll turn it over to Ben to introduce. Chef?
Thank you, Tim. Wow, a lot of interested folks in food and beverage. Nice to see. I just wanted to take a moment to recognize and introduce our newest culinary team leaders today. I am really excited to have them both here at the club. We have Executive Chef David Robbins, who joins us from the W Hotel, as many of you know. Thank you. He also has extensive private club background as Exec Chef at Fillers Creek, and that experience is going to be invaluable to take us to the places that we want to go here at Stonebridge. We have also added an Executive Sous Chef to the team in Mr. Liam Blake. Liam Blake joins us from the Old Collier Golf Club. Stand up and take a wave, everybody. Really excited to have both these gentlemen on the team. Like I said, I think the amount of experience and skill you're going to see in the new menus and all the new venues, all the events, and like Tim mentioned, about four weeks into this new direction we're going. So first week of February, we're looking to roll out some new menus for the daily venues. I know a lot of people have been concerned about that. So I think it's a really positive spot that we're in right now. It's going to be a transition for everybody to get used to, and a little bit of patience, and we'll be right where everybody wants us to be. So again, thank you for all your support here at the club and for the food and beverage operation. I mean, I've never seen the amount of member traffic in a club this size and just the way that you all patronize the club, and it's a real, you know, just shows how much you love your community and support, you know, the operations here. So thank you very much.
Thanks, guys. You can go back to work. I know you're... Sure. David likes to talk similar to the way Jeff Sink likes to talk, so I may have to pull the mic after a few minutes.
Can you guys hear me if I don't use the mic?
No.
A little bit better?
Yes.
Okay. Hi.
Hi.
There we go. It's so fantastic to see such a great, like Ben said, great amount of participation and enthusiasm of all the members here at Stonebridge. Basically, the long and short of it is that we are in a transition, and you've got 1,500 people here who all want the best out of this community, and that's a great thing. And we're honored to be here, to have such a supportive community for F&amp;B. And it's a great opportunity for myself and my team to really give you a great experience and to grow into something great. You know, Rome wasn't built in a day. There's a lot of already great things here and great traditions here at Stonebridge, which we want to kind of observe and recognize and preserve and then build on. So we want to take something that's already good, and we want to make it even better. At the end of the day, we're constantly working to just ultimately give each and every one of you the best food and beverage experience as possible, okay? So it's not just a great bite of food. It's not just having your server being attentive. It's the overall experience, and that's all we really want to do, okay? So please just continue to show us your positivity, your participation, and your patience, and I assure you, it's going to be a fantastic year. Thank you.
And on to the presentation. Tammy Tacitano, I didn't butcher that too bad, Tacitano. Tammy currently serves as the Director of National Club Services, responsible for overseeing the private club and association industry group for RSM McGladrey, which currently provides services to more than 300 private club association clients. She has over 20 years' experience in serving the hospitality organizations, and I'll turn it over to Tammy.
Thank you. Can everybody hear me? I'm very loud, and I do have a mic on, so hopefully you can. Well, thank you for having me. I was nervous when I arrived here at 2:30, and there wasn't a line out the door. I was saying to Tim that, you know, I work all over the state and all over the country, and food and beverage is one of my favorite things to talk about, and my Boca clubs, there would have been a line, and there would have been food already out, and no beverages, though, no beverages, no alcoholic beverages. We'll get to that joke here in a minute, but thank you for having me. I guess this is my clicker. This is a big day, big week for me, actually. I finally got my bio picture updated after 10 years, and now I'm being videoed today, so it's excellent. And I got to get out of the house. My house is being renovated, new hurricane windows. It's extremely loud, so I have so many reasons for wanting to be with you this afternoon. So without further ado, then, and talking about RSM, formerly McGladrey, formerly McGladrey and Pullen, and going way back when I actually started 25 years ago, we were called AM Pullen, and anybody from the Midwest probably knows that name more so than certainly RSM. So our meeting objectives today, it's really going to be fun, so I didn't want to put anything up here too intense, but the fact is, there are operational dynamics of private food and beverage in a private club that equate to the fact that there's going to be a subsidy that is right. It's a subsidy to the food and beverage operation that occurs in every private club. And so we're going to talk about what those food and beverage realities are. I'll start with a quote. I like this quote a lot, and I'll refer back to budget and what we budget for. And by design, again, clubs budget for a subsidy in food and beverage. And so this is the former CFO of the YWCA, and he says that we need to understand that we budget for the mission. We cannot change the mission to suit the budget. So we are a private club, and we have a mission surrounded by giving our members the best lifestyle that we possibly can, the membership experience. And so just to kind of start it a little bit light here and talk about years gone past and what food and beverage looked like, past, present, and of course, we'll get to the future. You all remember Flo from the series Alice way back when, and she had that pad to take the orders and would be chewing her gum. Well, my daughter asked me for a pencil sharpener the other day, and I was like, pencil sharpener? You guys still use pencils? So I say that in jest, but thankfully, they do, although they don't learn cursive writing anymore in school. That's gone. But so we've moved along from Flo, and now everything's reality TV, right? Restaurant Impossible and startup restaurants and all that sort of stuff. So what's it going to look like in the future? Well, this is already occurring, you know? Everybody has their smartphones, right? No flip phones in the room anymore. Have we all moved on to smartphones? I have a friend that still has a flip phone, so I really don't mean any offense there. But, you know, today, you can even order your coffee from Starbucks in advance. You can pay before you get there and pick it up. Well, in certain areas of the country, you can now have your Starbucks delivered to you. So it's a little more than $6 for a cup of coffee when you're getting it delivered, but what does that say? It says that obviously, the adult consumer today is extremely busy and can't even make it into the Starbucks to pay the $6 for a cup of coffee. So that is on the horizon for sure. This is actually LaGuardia Airport. I'm sure a lot of you are familiar with it, and you can see every diner there has their own iPad to order, to pay. I was there, as I said, recently, and I had a technology problem. I wanted a beer and could not order one. It was quite distressing. So but the point being is that food and beverage is evolving to evolve around how the adult consumer is today. We're very busy. I had to go to the gym at 6:00 a.m. this morning, or there's not going to be time, because we have, in my life, volleyball practice, piano lessons, everything under Irish dancing. And so I need that technology and need to be on the go, and we're seeing more and more of that, certainly. So continuing trends in food and beverage, this is something not new, just a reminder here. We're seeing more and more casual dining, expansion of casual dining, outdoor dining, small plates, healthy eating. That's certainly out there and continuing in popularity. Of course, accommodations for allergies and special diets. I get made fun a lot, you know? When I place an order, I want everything on the side, hold this, I don't want that, and my husband says, why don't you just go back in the kitchen and make it? So also on that lines, my daughter had a sleepover. She had four girls over. One was gluten-free, one's allergic to cinnamon, and a third's a vegetarian. I thought, wow, if this isn't just like having a little mini-private club, right? So here's my circle of truth. I've been talking about this for a couple of years now, and really what it is, we're going to run through eight differences between the restaurant industry and a private club. And before I go any further talking about the restaurant industry, my father owned a restaurant for 30 years, so I do not mean it as any disparity to the industry. It is a different business model than a private club is, and so we have these realities to take a look at. Restaurants are in business to make money, not surprising. Private club, we are in business to serve the members and to give you, again, that lifestyle that you expect. So first, I'll start with the overall. Tim was talking about our annual trends results, and I have the honor of actually being in charge of putting all this information together for our audit clients in Florida. I'll say again, they come from our audit clients. Here in Florida, we represent about 200 clubs in the state, and we break them out by region. I didn't want to have too much information up here. So when I go through trends, I'm going to be showing you what the state overall looks like. That's southeast without Boca. We break out Boca, because you will notice on every one of these slides, they look completely different. The theme in Boca relative to food and beverage is he who eats more wins, and you'll see when we look at some of their slides going through here. Southwest without Ciras, and then the southwest Ciras. You are all in the southwest Ciras. What's a Cira? It's a bundled community where the club and association are one, and there's required membership in that bundled community. Cira for fancy. So you'll see, we track food and beverage results both as a percentage of dues. Look at that in the state. The subsidy going to food and beverage is 16% of dues. Guess how much time we spend talking about food and beverage? This is good. I mean, you know, it's part of my job, so I don't want to talk it down, but a lot more than 16%. We also track it based on a percentage of food and beverage revenue. So what does that mean? So it means, on average, in the state, that for every dollar of food and beverage revenue, there is a $0.50 subsidy from dues. And you'll see, when you look at the southwest of Florida, we're a bit lower than that, certainly, and we'll go through some of the reasons for that. Restaurant information. So again, these are averages. There are certainly very profitable restaurants, but on average, the margin is between 3% and 6%. Doesn't sound like much, does it? 80% of restaurants operate at a profit, again, between 3% and 6%, and 20% operate at a loss. These are the most recent National Restaurant Association stats. 60% of restaurants go out of business in the first year, and within five years, 80% are out of business. Clearly not a model that we in a private club want to look like. So here are Stonebridge results, again, compared only to the southwest Ciras. Our overall subsidy this past year, $526,000, is almost exactly to the penny what, and I'm going to say peer group, so I don't have to continuously say southwest Ciras, because I can only say it so many times, spot-on. Our food-to-beverage ratio, this coast drinks a lot more as a percentage of total food and beverage. That's a good thing. Don't laugh. It helps the bottom line. It's why yacht and beach clubs look completely different than country clubs. For whatever reason, as golfers, we're just not as happy as boaters. They drank a lot more. There's probably more liability involved with that, but that's another story relative to water. It's a joke. So, you know, I see this slide, and quite honestly, I was like, why am I coming here? But again, it was really loud in the house, so I'm happy to be here. And on the previous slide, you know, we looked at what the percentage of dues that subsidy represents, and for our peer group, it was 14%. Our number's 11%. So the first circle, if you will, is privacy. So I had to come through the gate today. Thankfully, they let me in because they thought I was running the AV system, so AV's not here, I'm in trouble. But, right, so we're behind the gate. It's in the name, right? We're privates. And so unlike a restaurant who will allow anybody in the door that can pay the menu price, we have a selective membership, all about exclusivity. We are behind a gate because we're concerned, certainly more and more today, about safety and security, so we're not just going to let anybody in. And so with that said, our customer base is capped at our members and their guests. And obviously, we all know, we then have to combat seasonality on top of that. Members, obviously, you guys aren't all active all year round. You're not all active at the same time. People here, obviously, aren't here. They may not be active at all, and that's another presentation, but I think you see where I'm going relative to the number of potential consumers versus the restaurant industry. I thought this was a great quote. I just read an article this week out of a hotel journal, Hotel News Now. All the rage in hotels putting in these rooftop decks. Well, why are they doing it? They're not doing it for the hotel guests. They're doing it because they want to drive people that aren't staying at the hotel to come to the hotel, because as it's quoted there, we can't make it. The hotel cannot make it on the food and beverage side of things if they don't bring outsiders in. They can't support it through their guests. So obviously, we're relying on our members to support our restaurants, our food and beverage sales. So what did that look like? I guess I should have explained. You're probably going, it's 2016. Does she realize it's 2016? That says 2014. I said that we get this from audit information, and so at the end of all our audits for 2015, we published in 2016 the results. So those 2014 results were published in 2015. So, you know, overall in Florida, about a 3% increase in overall restaurant sales. Again, that's looking at the state. We didn't quite do as well looking at the southwest side of the state. We were only about 1% again, looking at the Cira population there. But you know, the restaurant industry grew at just under 4% over the same time period. Not a big growth there. So kind of to put those numbers in perspective. The second circle of truth is repetition. So we already heard we have our limited customer base. That's our membership. So now presently, for every dollar an adult consumer spends on food, $0.47 is spent outside the home, and $0.53 is spent on food that was prepared and consumed in the home. So I prepared it and I consumed it in the home. So now, we are private clubs targeting that $0.47. That's all we have to try to get, and guess what? Our consumers, our customers, our members are 100% repeat customers. Unlike looking at the restaurant industry, let's just look at casual and family dining, only 65% are currently repeat customers. So to look at it a different way, if I wanted Italian food, by the way, Tacitano, you said very well, I am Italian. My dad had an Italian restaurant. So if you want Italian food, you go to an Italian restaurant. If you want fish, you're going to go to a seafood restaurant. You kind of get the point here. Five different desires, five different restaurants. Well, we're doing that in a private club, all under one roof, right? Because we want our members to keep coming back, come back every day. If I give you the same thing, you're not going to want to come back every day. And so under our one roof, we're trying to offer all these various choices, so we don't isolate any one member. We try to be all things to all members. So what does that, there's a cost involved with that, because now I have competing facilities in my same footprint, in my same club, but I still only have the same membership base. I can't eat in two places at once. I have some partners I work with that probably could eat in two places at once, but for the most part, I can't. the most part, I can't. So now I need more staff. I need more supervision. I certainly need more inventory, perishable inventory. Food's perishable, right? And so there's certainly a cost involved with that. It looks different. It's budgeted. It's designed to be different. You didn't give me a time limit, which is a little bit, okay, yeah, which is a little, yeah, you thought the chef was bad. Moving on to quality and quantity, I, you know, I kind of joked to some people coming in, there was going to be a quiz. So which wine pour do you think's the private club here? Yeah? Not even a chance of you getting that wrong. You know, when we talk about quantity and quality being different, and these are real statistics, the average restaurant wine pour is six ounces. Not in a private club, right? We're eight, nine ounces. Alcohol pour, restaurant, one and a half ounce average. I go out with my husband, I say, there's nothing in this? And he said, that's because when I make it for you at home, it's like four ounces. I said, God, it's perfect. Private club member, right? And it's not just about alcohol. We're bigger plates, you know, food's bigger. It's a better product. It's fresh. It's never frozen. It's organic. It's all of those things that cost more money. You don't see jiggers. You don't see, you know, when you go overseas and they have the optic pours. None of that. So the quantity and quality, again, is different. And so what's the result there? Combined cost of sales in the previous year remained relatively flat, both in Florida overall and when we look at our peer group. And you're going, ah, how could that be? How could that possibly be? Costs are going up. You'll see on another slide, we did get some price increases as an industry, small ones, but we did get some through, which really accounts for why this cost of sales remains relatively flat. And this is just an average, but the average cost of sales in the restaurant industry is 35%. Okay, I love this slide. You know, things are evolving with club policies for sure, especially relative to jeans, and I have a slide on that. But even as the duke and duchess of Cambridge, I don't think we'd let them in dressed like that. But the point with club policies is, you know, as I said, we have our limited customer base, our members, and we want them to come back as much as possible. But are our club policies prohibiting our members from using the club as much as they might want to? I talked about smartphones earlier. You saw, you know, about Starbucks and that. Listen, if I can't check my email on my smartphone while I'm at dinner with my husband, I'm not a happy camper. Then we're going to have to talk, and you know, who knows where that's going to lead? And you can't get kids out of jeans these days. So if my daughter can't have her jeans that kind of look like that on, then you kind of get where I'm going. I'm going to have to go where that stuff is allowed. And so things have changed. This is a survey that was done of about 500 clubs. And as you can see there, 97% of clubs surveyed here, at somewhere in the club, you're allowed to use a smartphone, not talk on the phone. Use the smartphone, as in be able to have it out and that sort of thing, somewhere in the club. Same sort of thing relative to jeans. Now, I get this all the time. I'm like, well, what do you see? Is it all jeans? Is it, can you wear blue jeans? Can you wear black jeans? Is it just black jeans or just white jeans? What kind of jeans can we wear? Well, orange is the new black, so can I wear orange jeans? But anyway, 84% of clubs today, at some point, on average, we would say, based on this survey, allow jeans somewhere in the club at certain points. Pricing. So we're on now, I'm moving around here, I'm on the fifth circle. Pricing. You all are very price sensitive, and you should be. You know, we pay dues, right? We already pay dues. We don't want to see menu price increases. You know, it's, we're dealing in a highly competitive market. As I said back on that slide, we're competing for that 43 cents of the dollar being spent on food. So let's be careful with what we're charging. But the fact of the matter is, if we look at the last five years, wholesale food prices went up 25% over the last five years. Your menu prices have not increased 25%. So what does that mean? It's coming from somewhere, right? Dues, subsidy. Okay, looking back at 2010, now obviously here, we were in the recessionary period, so only 21% of our clubs in the entire state raised menu prices at all that year. 21%. Jump fast forward to 2014, 54% raised menu prices. And it's similar when you look at drink prices. 16% back in 2010 raised drink prices. We're up to 41% here recently. Now, I'll do the math for you. Even if I'm a club that raised my menu prices the entire five-year period, I only got up 21%. So I didn't make the 25% increase in wholesale food prices. Now, what are they doing in the restaurant industry? You see here, I'm going to pass those costs along. More than 70%, depending on which market you're in, in the restaurant industry, is raising menu prices in order to keep up with elevated costs. Staffing and labor. We're on to circle of truth number six. Obviously, staffing and labor is the largest expense in a private club. We're a very labor-intensive industry. And so certainly in food and beverage, that is our largest expense. You know, we like to refer to the menu as being a guide. And this is when we can kind of laugh and, you know, go back to say how I like to order things exactly the way I want. And I want this on the side. And, you know, I'm sure you have been to restaurants where it says on the bottom of menu, on the menu, no changes. And they mean no changes. Because the chef, eh, he has a temperament, and please don't ask to change the menu. But not in a private club. If I order something, there better be somebody in the kitchen that has the ability to prepare it. So not a line cook who only prepares 20 things off of the same menu every day. And we better have the inventory to make it. Back to the perishable food inventory and having to have that on hand. You all like to see the same smiling face every day, right? I mean, I do. I would like to come in and, you know, talk to the staff that know all about my cat Frankie. So we can't, we don't want turnover. And I'm going to have the slide next. You're going to be shocked to see what turnover is in the restaurant industry. Obviously, we're a non-cash environment, so we are competing for labor when we don't deal in cash. I said earlier about how we're obviously seasonal as a club, and so now what do we do with our staff off-season? These are differences, right? So as you all know, you know, I said we're a non-cash environment. Some clubs have a gratuity, which they charge on their chit, and some clubs have a monthly or annual service charge. You all know that you fall under the service charge method. And so that is what we are doing out of a non-cash, non-tipping environment. Amazing, turnover in the restaurant industry. Pre-recession, it was over 80% turnover. Could you imagine if we had 80% turnover? You guys are probably be in big trouble, right? It's inching back up at 60%, but it far exceeds, the restaurant industry far exceeds the entire private sector and always has in turnover. Why? Well, they have substantially lower wages than if you look at the private sector as a whole. One reason, certainly. So what did staffing and labor do in Florida in our, in our club base? Stayed pretty flat. 87% when you look at Florida as a whole. And again, the southwest Syra is at about 82%. Look at those Boca numbers, over 100%. That means their salary and wage expense, just alone, without anything else, without cost of sales and other expenses, exceeds their revenue in food and beverage. Okay, job growth. So here we are, we're non-cash, we're competing for a labor pool that is steadily growing higher, the demand in the restaurant industry is steadily growing higher than any other sector. It is actually the major industry that has really said, has pushed us out and is continuing to push us out and away from the recession when you look at a 15-year period. So I thought this was an interesting article, going back to tipping in the restaurant industry. Well, look at what's even happening, because the restaurant industry saying, listen, cash tips are not the best way to go if we want to retain good employees, bring turnover down. And so there are clubs, this is, this is actually a quote from a New York restaurant, that they look at and they are starting to experiment with having higher menu prices that will take into account paying higher wages and doing away with cash tipping. Capacity, the next circle of truth. I love that line. Standing there, of course, you know, we say this in jest, but we never want our members to be waiting in line. We typically don't enforce, typically, okay, enforce reservations. The restaurant industry has a large window of opportunity for revenue. That's four to five hours a night, and on average, turntables two to three times. In a private club, typically, our members want to come at the same time, and they spend the night. That's good. That's the lifestyle. That is part of our mission and our budget, and so that's a good thing. Typically, we have excess capacity when it comes to à la carte dining, and then we have to deal with, it's holidays, it's special events, and then we don't typically in the industry have enough room for everybody that wants to be there. What do restaurants do? Well, I know it's happened to all of you. It certainly happened to me. You've made a reservation, and you arrive, and you're, you know, right on time, and they say, no, it's going to be about 20 minutes, you know, go to the bar, have a drink, and I'm like, oh, but I see empty tables. It's by design. Less staff. It's more profitable. It's, the, the, obviously, the staff want the tips. And of course, you're being sent to the bar, which has a much higher profit margin than food. By design that way. So the mix is the last circle of truth. Oh, I'm glad we got a laugh. I love this slide. It's one of my favorite. The difference in the mix talks about several different things. In private clubs, we have very minimal breakfast volume. This is as a general statement. Certainly that you're charged for. In Boca, they have things called bagel rooms. These are real rooms where they put out breakfast, bagels, everything you want. There's no charge for that. Dinners later, lunch is heavy. This is, again, as a generality in private clubs. So during lunch, we don't typically have alcohol consumption. Something that's different than in the restaurant industry with higher sales on the dinner and certainly breakfast side of things. We have a lower food to beverage ratio, and certainly we have demographic mixes to deal with. What, you know, different generations want. Like I said, I want to be able to not talk to my husband and look at my smartphone and have my daughter in her jeans, and so trying to deal with those differences. Breakfast, and this is certainly a continuing trend as we see out there with McDonald's doing breakfast all day now. Breakfast is the fastest-growing daypart in the restaurant industry. It's the fastest-growing because it's the most profitable. And I said, private clubs do very little breakfast business that they charge for. We talked about coffee at Starbucks and what that cost is and getting it delivered to you. It is the high-margin add-in that they are bringing you in for that is part of why breakfast wants to be out there all day because of the profitability relative to it. Getting some yawns, I'm coming to a close here. So food to beverage sales, what does this mean? So on average in Florida, it takes $3.25 of food sales to equal $1 of beverage sales. Look at those Boca numbers. $6 of food to every dollar of beverage. That directly impacts the bottom line in food and beverage. And southwest Ciras, you guys have historically been the best in food to beverage ratios. So although I'm very disappointed to see, I don't see any drinks in the group. Again, on average, the restaurant industry is operating closer to a two-to-one ratio. The yacht clubs get a little closer, but not quite. And so what's happening relative to the mix? You got to love the self-serve taps. And why is this, why is this happening? Well, certainly, it's cutting down on needing people, taking people out of the equation. You're going to serve yourselves. You're going to pay yourself. Smaller footprint, limited menu here in this example. So I need less kitchen facilities and everything else that goes with it. So certainly, looking at the future there, and I'm going to leave you with this since I started about not being able to get my beer at the airport. I'm glad I got a chuckle out of you. So thank you, and I guess we're going to take questions.
We will. We're going to open it up to a Q and A. If anyone has any questions, they can come back to the mic right over here. And talking about the food to beverage ratio, happy hour starts in eight minutes. But if we're quick on the questions, we'll open up happy hour early. So we want, we want to work on that food to beverage ratio. You ready to go to the bar? That's a good thing. All right, if there's no questions, I just want, there's, okay.
Just considering the dress code as it's progressing over time, with generations coming in, different tastes, so on. And if you have to treat in a private club like us, with some people accustomed to certain clothes, and others accustomed to more casual dress like jeans. And so accommodate, even have different parts of the club accommodate the, I was wondering about thoughts on that.
Sure. The question or the comment was about the mix of casual attire and the fact that, and the great thing about the renovation of the clubhouse is we do have some more of that flexibility. Our current dress code, as I'm sure most of you know, is very relaxed down in the bistro. So, you know, jeans, even t-shirts, hats, pretty, pretty much anything goes down in the bistro. So you have that casual outlet. You know, prior to the renovation, we had one dress code for the dining room, and it was a bit more restrictive, you know? So now we actually allow fashion ladies, fashion denim, I think that's the right term, upstairs in the dining room and the grill room. But that's definitely a trend and something that is a challenge because, you know, some members feel, you know, this is, this is my club, and it should be, you know, jacket for the gentleman on a Friday or Saturday. And, you know, it's definitely trending more towards a casual option. So the good thing is we have a nice mix right now between the bistro downstairs and then upstairs. It's a good point, though. It's a good point, though. Mr. Murphy.
Sure.
Then I won't have to repeat it.
Thanks. So I think, on?
Yes.
So the, the critical slide, Tammy, I thought was at the beginning where you had the comparison of the subsidy here at Stonebridge with the bundle clubs in Southwest Florida. And you, and you joked, I don't know why we're here because it seems like we're doing pretty good. But that subsidy is four or 500,000, I can't recall. It's a, it's kind of a big number. Five?
Five twenty-six.
It grew in the last hour. Well, so, so that's what it should be and that's what GIF and the budget tiers budget for, and that's what the management manages to. And that seems to be the way it should occur. But, and then you went through the circle of truth to say that there's no way you're going to make any money here in a club in, in Florida with the seasonality, et cetera, et cetera. But what, what would you say to someone who didn't understand this and wasn't here today who says, I don't care what these facts are, why are we losing 535,000 dollars? Why don't you change your procedures to cut that? Say, let's cut it in half. What, what's the answer to that? I've heard your procedure, your, I've heard this now, I've been happy to hear this four or five times. I think I know it fairly well, but I still run into that question and they say, I don't care, we're losing too much money.
Well, I'm first going to say, what did the membership survey say they wanted, right? So in order to get there, what would I have to do to accomplish that? And then how would that impact the fact that I have the same member base that I want to continue to use the club? And, you know, these numbers don't even take into the account, as we said, coming post renovation. What we've gone through happens everywhere post renovation. We need time to get used to the new facilities. So that's certainly part of it. But again, it's a due subsidy and back to the slide about we budget for the mission, we don't change the mission to suit the budget. And that's exactly what I'd be doing. You know, I'll, I'll give this a quick, because I don't want to go into a long story, I'll give you a quick example. I had a client and they tried to apply cost accounting to the various outlets in the club and said, well, you know, we're not really applying all the costs here and to there and what does it really cost to run the Sugar Shack? Well, the Sugar Shack is the busiest part of the club. They're not a golf club, they are a beach club. So you would imagine something called the Sugar Shack is pretty important around their mission. I said, why are we doing this analysis? If you shut the Sugar Shack down, what's going to happen to the membership?
They're going to go.
They're not going to be happy, right? So why are we doing the analysis? We have to look, every department in the clubs and amenity, I didn't say that, every department, not just food and beverage, every department. And that's why we operate with dues because of that. So I hope that answers some of the questions. I don't know if you have anything else to add.
Yeah, on, on the Stonebridge side of that too, you look at what we offered when, when the developer was here, you know, the developer, they wanted to have a nice clubhouse and offer the amenity so that they could say they offered food and beverage. We had dinner in peak season two nights a week.
Right.
We have dinner almost every night of the week and many times, well, every night of the week in the bistro this time of the year. Many times we have dinner in two different venues. And, you know, to think that two nights a week, okay, that'll minimize your loss, but how happy is the membership going to be coming in and using the club?
You know, you raise a very good point and I, and I think when I say private club all the time, everybody knows what I mean. Private club, member-owned, completely different model than the developer model, completely different. Our clients in these numbers are private, member-owned clubs. So their models are as apples to apples as they possibly can be. Developer model, completely different. They're selling real estate, they don't care about those things. That's why joining fees change when it's, that's a whole nother presentation.
Tammy, thank you for the, for the presentation here today, it was great. Question I have for you relates to service charges. You mentioned that you here, I think your words, where you here charge the service charge. Other clubs, what are the other clubs doing? Are they not charging the service charge or how is that being organized?
There's two different methods. Either the gratuity method that's added and it's on average 20% to the chit, or it's a service charge method. In your peer group, there's only two clubs that use the service charge method. It's just not as prevalent on this coast. In Boca, 40% of the clubs use a service charge method. It's just a preference and it's part, again, going back to the budget process and what's budgeted for. You know, philosophy of, you know, if I eat it, I'm paying for it versus service charge. So that's really the difference. It's going to be one or the other because there isn't any cash in any of these numbers.
Tim, go ahead.
Yeah, and to add on on the service charge specific to here, I've mentioned many times the budget presentation meeting, the staffing here is a particular challenge because we are, the, the food and beverage staff is not only serving the members, they're setting up rooms like this, you know, and Ben knows all too well, this time of the year, we'll have rooms that turn two, three, four times. So you may have a server who's here for 12, 14 hours in a day, but they're actually serving the members maybe three or four of those hours. That may be an extreme example, but that's a true example. So if we were working off a 20% gratuity base, it'd be very difficult to find staff to, A, work to set up all of these functions when they're relying on that 20% gratuity. So we found that the service charge in that slide pointed out, it gives us the ability to have a guaranteed rate of pay for the staff to attract, and then we can pay based on the ability of that team member. So if we have someone who's excelling, we can pay them a little bit more, you know, and, and that's funded by the service charge. The slide that we had up there basically explained that seven dollars of their base wage comes out of the food and beverage budget and then it's supplemented with the service charge. On average, that's about $10 to get them to 17. So if they were working off a 20% gratuity base, they'd have to have a significantly higher base wage.
Right.
My, my concern with, with that is that there are some people here, I have somebody in my neighborhood who's been here once this year and quite frankly, financial situations probably being what they are, they, they just don't go out that much, they want to stay home. And being Canadian, now with the Canadian dollar, we've got another issue to deal with. But that's beside the point. But, but I guess what I'm saying is that sometimes I feel that the current system is unfair to those who are not using the facilities or for whatever reason are, can't use the facilities as much as they would like. And so they're paying 540 dollars, which they don't even know they're paying necessarily.
Yeah, the comment, just to repeat it, was that for those that don't use the club very much, it is not as fair as those who use the club a lot. And the service charge is a dues component.
Right.
So you could look at that same example in any one of the amenity offerings. You're paying through your dues to support the golf course operations. If you're not here using the golf course, we still have to maintain the golf course. The club is becoming much more of a 12-month operation than we ever have been and it will continue to go in that trend. So the service charge allows us to have the adequate staffing throughout the year. So even those that are seasonal aren't here enjoying the club, you're paying your part, your piece, just like you do through your dues subsidy to keep the operations running 12 months of the year.
Right, because regardless of which method you're using, there's still the dues subsidy. So it's, as you said, it is a method of dues. It's, it's, that subsidy's coming from dues regardless of what you want to call it.
Yes, now we're getting some questions.
So I really appreciate the context you provide regarding particularly 526,000 dollars. But I'm curious, I totally agree with you, what you're saying on the mission. I'm curious, given the bad surveys, mission is translate and tactically. So obviously there would be a spectrum of what people think for themselves the mission is. My question is really for you, Tim. Given the spectrum, this 526,000 dollars, it might come, should be more.
That's a very good question. And actually, we're looking at last year's numbers. It should have been more, it actually should have. We didn't have the management team in place to adequately staff and take care of the members. We didn't have enough staff on the floor last season to take care of the members and we felt it, just like you said in the member survey. We, we received that data loud and clear. We were not, we were not accomplishing the mission. We were not satisfying the members in food and beverage. So to your answer, that number is too low. Now, one thing to keep in, in mind, that 526 includes the shortfall in the service charge. Because we were much busier than we had anticipated, had been anticipated, and as the other slide said, the service charge goes directly to the server. So the more hours worked, the more service charge needed. So we came to the end of last fiscal year, again, not expecting it to double our volume, we had anticipated probably a 20, 25% increase, practically doubled it. So the service charge came in a shortfall of 120, 116,000. So that 526 includes that shortfall as well. One of the things that it, it takes out of the equation, which I, you probably can't even read in the front row, is it takes out entertainment and decorations because depending on the club, and I'm sure probably in Boca, because everything is different in Boca, the entertainment and decor for the purpose of the analysis is taken out because in some clubs you're going to have decorations coming out of a member relations department or admin or, you know, it could be coming from somewhere else. So that information's extracted. The interesting number is our entertainment and decorations number for the audit of 2015 is almost 80,000 dollars. And I'm not sure what the average is, but I'm sure that's pretty high for, especially for a bundle club Southwest Florida, maybe not Boca, but.
Sure, that has to do with coming with the new.
With the new operation and the fact that, you know, we have entertainment, I actually have some information at the board meeting this Friday about just how much we do. You know, we have entertainment outside the bistro twice a week this time of year, we have dinner dances, we have entertainment upstairs. Last Saturday, we had entertainment upstairs while we had it downstairs. So we have a lot invested in the entertainment, but that's part of that whole mission, it's part of the social network, it's getting the members together. So, you know, we're still somewhat finding our way as to what that proper mix is. You know, when we opened up the club, we essentially said, okay, we're going to open up everything and see where the numbers lie. If the bistro's a little slower, the grill room, we can adjust hours of operation. What we saw last season, we couldn't adjust the hours of operation down at all. Everything was busy, you know, so we're still, and we're still growing from there. We're, we're on track to do more this year than we did last. So did that sufficiently?
Should the number be?
What, what should the number be?
I mean, you prepared a budget, right?
Right.
It's helping the preparation of the budget.
Yeah, no, and I think it depends on what the, the total volume ends up at. It should be closer to that 42%. It really should. We have a, you know, there is some benefit there with the service charge because, you know, we're not, we're able to pay a base wage of $7 an hour versus if we didn't have the service charge, we'd probably have to be paying 10, $12 an hour. So that would increase that loss. But the average is 42 cents on the dollar and, you know, this analysis, we're at 34 cents on the dollar, taking out entertainment and decorations, and it, and honestly, it should be a little bit higher.
And we're not realized that our budget is October through October, not a year.
Right, right.
Yeah, fiscal year is October through September. We're losing out on our food to beverage ratio here, folks.
Yeah, well, I'm just, I'm gonna, I'll be, try to be quick, which is hard. But this is my favorite slide. Tim and Tammy, the bottom line up there, I think is very telling to tell, to kind of put into perspective for the group, the, the food and beverage operation here, and that's combined sales for the year in question. The trends, I suspect, is the average of the Sierra clubs in the area.
Right.
And we are, by my quick calculation, in 2015, a year where per our survey, we had substandard service. 1,500 members, all of them bowed never to return. And yet, we exceeded the average on food and beverage sales by 22%.
Right.
Now, the budget for this year is, GIF, I think it's 1.6 million.
Close, yeah.
The expectation is, you know, 1.8, we may hit 2 million of sales this year. And so I think I heard at the McGladrey presentation from those GMs who experienced the ramp-ups after renovations, that it's not proportional to subsidy to the growth in sales. Because that's a fear here. When I, when I tell everybody, especially with our new chef, oh boy, we're going to hit 2 million, they all look at me and say, we're going to lose a lot more. But I don't think that's true. Is that right, I hope?
No, no, that's right. I mean, there, there are obviously a lot of components that go into that bottom line. And, you know, I joked a lot about the beverage component and certainly the types of activities that are, are involved as well. So no, you can't make a statement that the more volume we do, the bigger the subsidy is going to be. There's a lot of different moving parts to it.
And, and in a percentage basis, you have a lot of fixed cost, not a lot, you have some fixed costs.
Right.
So that tends to look better on a, on a bigger picture. So your percentage is going to go down, doesn't mean your loss is going to go down, but in a percentage basis will look better. For example, so of this, of this 100, 134%, so 34 cents.
34 cents, yeah.
34 cents on the dollar. Of the, of the salary component here, almost 60%, a portion of that is attributed to salaries, not the hourly, but the actual salary employees, chef, food and beverage manager. So the rest of it's variable. That variable is going to go up as the business goes up, just like we saw last year with the service charge, we needed a lot more staff than we had anticipated. So you have some fixed costs here, other, food, obviously the cost of goods, the cost of the food, cost of the beverage, that goes up with the volume of business. On the other, there are a few fixed costs in there as well, but a lot of that is variable too. Linens, chemical to wash the dishes, I mean, just the list goes on and on, but there are some fixed costs in there that wouldn't go up. If you back out the fixed cost, that number comes down to about 118%, 18 cents on the dollar. So you can see as your volume goes up, that percentage goes down, but the actual dollar amount in the subsidy does start to inch up.
Tim, I don't know if this is for you or Tammy, but expanding on a couple of questions that have already been asked. I struggle with this Sierra club, the way the numbers are presented. When you say the 526 is about 14% of dues, that makes sense. But as you mentioned, our service charge is really a part of dues. And don't you take the service charge and not book it as revenue, but you reduce labor? Am I correct?
For, for trends purposes, and this is going to get a little confusing.
That's what I am.
For trends purposes, we, just like the entertainment and decorations, in the trends numbers, everybody's numbers for decorations are taken out. So whether I'm on a service charge method or a gratuity charge method, we are equalizing salary and wages so that you only get a credit equal to using a gratuity method. So you're.
You don't book it as income, but you book it, you take it out of labor. When McGladrey presents our numbers, or Tim does, our service charge, we reduce the labor. Am I correct, Tim?
That's, it's in food and beverage, net, yes.
So our real cost would be more than the 526?
No.
If we counted the service charge?
Well, it would be more if you added it in, but you can then not compare with other clubs.
Right, right.
Because the other clubs are paying, you know, in this scenario, they're not including the 20% that they're getting in gratuity. So in order to compare apples to apples, you wouldn't add the service charge on our side and not show the 20% gratuity on the other.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Right.
Not, not really in the sense that I'm paying it as a member. We're paying another 400,000 in service charge.
Yeah.
And we're paying that to reduce labor. So by my book, whether I have $10 in this pocket or this pocket, if I spend, both $10 and $20.
You're right, it's, it's, you're right in the sense that it's all a part of dues. Right, it's all a part of dues. But when you compare, you can't show it on one side and not the other.
Right. Right.
And on the other side, on the comparison to, to other bundle clubs, that 64% does not include their 20% gratuity, or if they have a service charge, it's not going to include anything...
And you're saying the other Sarah clubs, you said there were two of them that have service charges, the other ones put their gratuity in their labor number?
No, they don't, they won't show the gratuity in their salary number, it, it won't show there.
So that would be a 20% difference?
No, no, everybody's equalized here. They are all, you're all getting equal credit in these numbers, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yep.
Now it really is happy hour. Nope, we have another question.
One, I'm hearing young men say, you may reference to, it does appear that we will have a break-even?
That, that's a good question to end with, because that sums it up well, you're absolutely correct. The, the comment was, if you didn't hear, no matter what volume we do, we will not get to a break-even point.
Everybody's here 12 months a year, they keep here, we will never break even.
Correct.
No, no, no.
It is, it, it's an amenity...
It's an amenity, that's right.
Just, just as Tammy said, it's an amenity, just as the golf operations are, when you net it against the golf course maintenance.
Just, right.
All right, well, we're getting a lot of chatter, so I think that's it, we're all set? Thank you.